Article one, you will like the moderator to preside at said meeting and to fix compensation. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Jeff Aronson. I suggest we reduce his compensation. He's on something different from Dave Paul.
Is there a second? Second. We have a second. Surprise, Jeff. You're voted in.
Mr. Cross.
I'd like to make a motion that non-presidents be allowed to speak at our town meeting.
Do we have a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of allowing non-presidents to speak at tonight's town meeting. And all opposed? Okay, motion carries. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,000 for selectmen from the fund balance and to fix selectmen's compensation at $600 per member for a 12-month period. Do I have a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of Article two, please raise your right hand. All opposed? The motion carries. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $321,615 for the administration account. $8,300 from clerk and agent fees, $7,500 from investment income, $9,070 in fund balance, and $296,745 from taxation. Do I have a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of Article three, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Okay, the motion carries, the article carries. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $36,070 for the assessor account. $15,000 from tax fees and interest, $1,500 from fund balance, and $19,570 from taxation. Is there a second to this motion? Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article four. All in favor, please raise your hand, your right hand. Okay, all opposed? If the article carries. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $40,000 for the professional services account from fund balance. Do I have a second? Second, thank you, Gary. Is there any discussion? Question? Okay, what is the professional services account? Or what is it used for? And money's coming from the fund balance. Andy, or selectman, could you answer that?
That money is broken down in legal fees and engineering fees. So the legal fees is something we've carried and then more recently with the capital projects that we have to accomplish the engineering fees is something that allows us to start, maybe start some studies or such to get those properties forward.
Thank you, Andy. Other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article five, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Seeing none, Article five passes. Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $61,365 for the Washington School Municipal Building. $24,100 from fund balance and $37,265 from taxation. Is there a second? Second, thank you. Uh, discussion? Point of order, Eric. I can't hear you. It's on the warrant. I read the warrant.
Yes, but someone had to say.
And I will, I will accept that. Can I have somebody who wants to make a motion for Article five? I have a motion, and can I have a second? Okay, second it is, thank you very much, Eric. So let's go back to Article six to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $61,365 for the Washington School Municipal Building. $24,100 from the fund balance and $37,265 from taxation. It was moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Yes, Ellen, is that you?
Yep.
Can somebody answer the question? So up on the screen, you see the goals for that project to install a heat pump system for cooling and dehumidifying and to increase capacity to conduct building improvements. Uh, the question was on the second part of that, Ellen, is that correct? Is there someone from the select board or Andy, could you help that?
Yes, I mean, the heat pumps were a big part of it. Those were 13, I got a quote for $13,600 for the heat pumps. And then the rest of it, we've got flabs that are rotting and we got siding that needs to be painted. Parts of the roof that have some water coming in, or some of the slates missing. So it's just a short list of things that we need to maintain the building.
Andy, there was a question as well on the second goal, could you help clarify that?
Right, so the funds from that for the improvements would help fund some of those improvements I have mentioned there.
Ellen?
We need either to hire somebody as a service provider or the contractor to do the work or possibility of part-time in-house kind of thing. So it just, it's not determined yet which way it'll go, but we, either way, we need someone to be able to do the work so the budget allows for the work to be completed. It's not something that currently is proactively funded.
Yes?
Sure, so the $61,365, $13,860 is for custodial wages, $9,705 is for service fees like telephone, internet, and $1,200 for supplies, $11,000 for utilities, and $25,600 for the improvements, $13,600 of which would be the heat pump.
And just remind everyone, if you have a question, please direct it to the moderator and I'll send the question off. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote on Article six, all in favor? No, all opposed? To be none, the article carries. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $121,335 for police protection from the Knox County Sheriff's Department, $121,335 from taxation. Do I have a motion to move this forward? So move, second? Seconded. Is there any discussion on Article seven? Ellen? Don? Would you want to comment? Please talk to the microphone.
I have the same question and I share the same concerns. I voted against this article last two years and I plan on voting against it this year.
Now Phil.
And he's not alone.
Other question, Ellen, you had a question, is there anyone who can identify the basis of the $121,000 amount in this article? Anyone on the selectmen or Andy?
Yeah, so if you were able to grab a packet on the way and there was a detailed budget sheet for this year that kind of walks through, so I can walk through that there. So for this year, service fees estimated a total of $1975, that's $1975. Those include things like towing charges and computer service fees or off-island transport. Next one is lodging, lodging fees, lodging costs at $10,200. Again, part of the contract that we've signed the last few years is that we compensate part of the housing expenses. Travel and trans, getting paid for either boat tickets, getting, getting other officers out to the island. But here, we own the cruiser, so we are obligated to keep it and maintain. $1,500 for general supplies, again, to maintain an office here, so if nothing else, keeping the office with supplies in it. Gas and oil, be able to fuel the cruiser, that's $4,500. $4,500 for utilities that goes mostly to the lodging, the board capped the utilities that will reimburse or pay towards the housing at $4,500 a year, a few years ago. Telephone charges for the cell phone in the, in the office at 2040. And then the $93,200 for the contracted services. So the way it works, we contract for 40 hours, we pay 50%, the county pays 50% of the 40 hours. Beyond that, if there's overtime that we request, we pay 100% of that personnel cost for the overtime.
Ellen, follow up, yes? Do we, do we get a sense of housing expense by some formula? Andrew, or can you answer that question, Rick?
It was born in the contract, it just says that we'll provide housing, doesn't necessarily stipulate that they have to live here or shall live here, we've been blessed that past deputies have. And though it's not, they're not getting the full amount at this time, but it's a small stipend nonetheless. That's a point that the selectmen want to make sure is explicitly stated in the next contract.
Yes, Ellen?
Right now, it's $1,000 a month.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you could, if you have a comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you, yes, one moment, please, we have a question on the floor, you'll be next, sir. Ellen? Okay, thank you. Sir, I'm sorry I can't see you because you're in the dark, do you want to speak now? Hello, Kyle, there you are, ma'am. Yes, sir, now I can see you. Good. Thank you, Kyle. Again, if I could just ask if you have comments to make, if you could direct them to the moderator first, please? Other continued discussion, yes, Mr. Cross? Andy, can you help with that question?
Sure, so a couple of years ago, acknowledging that some of the local ordinances weren't being enforced or at all or to any standard that was expected, we tried to, we did advertise and tried to hire a position that would encompass like constable, harbor master, and animal control officer. And so the cost for that position, insurance, retirement, wages split between those three departments, that's not proposed for this year.
Sir?
It's not in the budget. If you look on the right-hand side.
Question answered. Thank you, Drake. Are there other questions or other comments? More discussion?
Eric, let me just one comment. I understand there's a lot of frustration with not trying to share our purpose right now and for a very good reason. However, if this article gets voted down, what it does, it prevents the board of selectmen from negotiating a new contract with Knox County Sheriff's Office for the upcoming year. If we cannot negotiate a new contract, I can assure you that law enforcement on the side will not get any better. That's, I vote how you want to vote, I don't blame anybody for voting it down. However, keep that in mind, please.
Phil?
And I want to second that and remind everyone that the board shares your concern about law enforcement and we are determined to improve the circumstances under which we receive law enforcement with Knox County. And a vote in the affirmative, in the affirmative will allow us to continue to do that and we do have your best interests, I assure you.
Uh, yes, sir, in the back. Eric?
I'm personally hoping, and I think the rest of the board is in agreement with me, that the resident deputy, even though the contract never uses the word resident deputy, is actually a resident of the county, I don't pay them. That's number one. And really, probably my biggest.
I want accountability, I want to know if they hold someone over or if they get caught, if they actually respond to it. I want some kind of, been asking for it for a couple of years now. I want more accountability on exactly what they do with their time and responding to what they're supposed to be doing. On top of that.
Other selectmen wish to speak to this? An answer, Don?
We already pay over, is it half a million for the county in taxes that are supposed to provide us with law enforcement? Again, I don't see why we're paying extra for a service that clearly is not provided when we have citizens here tonight saying they don't feel safe. So, again, I don't disagree with what the board has said. I just, I'm at the point where I don't see why we need to pay extra for something we're not getting.
Thank you? Yes? I see Eric first and then Phil, Eric?
To be perfectly honest, and we as politicians should never be honest, but it is almost certain that even if we negotiate a better contract because of labor shortages in the department, the idea of getting significantly improved law enforcement on the island is hopeful as well.
Phil?
Oh, never mind, thank you, okay.
Additional discussion, Ellen? I see Kyle, I see your hand up.
Phil? We're in agreement with you again, Kyle, and as a matter of fact, a couple of years ago, the sergeant, the sergeant at the time came out to address the selectmen. He actually suggested that law enforcement on these islands, which is how we characterize them, is not as serious as it is on the mainland. And all the selectmen took issue with his assumption that we expected to be treated differently. And we're carrying that to our current negotiations with the sheriff. Certainly, we agree with you and are of one mind relative to the quality of law enforcement on the island being constant and reliable.
Yes, Ellen? So, this is drifting far from Article seven, but I will allow it. But this is not really in order. However, I will allow, since I saw Phil's hand go up and.
I still feel that way, Ellen, and I will still try to make a persuasive argument that we do that, but there are legitimate reasons why it has met with opposition from various fronts in the past, not the least of which has to do with budgetary concerns, the costs that would be involved in funding a department of our own, which would really be a considerable expense. Nonetheless, I'm still in favor.
Mr. Cross, yes, sir? This is to allow, to appropriate an amount to be spent, does not obligate that expenditure, it simply says that that's what it would get used for up to that amount, Eric?
It also will note that at town meeting, that number cannot be voted up. It can be voted, it can be motion to lower the. You cannot make much of it.
I can't, we can't change the language, only the amount. Are there additional questions? Additional discussion? Ellen? No? You can't change the language of an article, you can only reduce the amount. Are there any select, Phil, I see your hand up, yes? Are there additional? Sorry, Jake, yeah?
As they're referring to the selectmen's meeting last night, and there's been a drafted contract presented to the county and just due to the schedules and everything that's happened, happening this spring, we haven't actually met, scheduled a few times, it's been put off. So right now, they're referring to the draft that was drafted for January through June that would get us to that last disclosure. And however, the points that are in there are that we had last night, one of which included a resident deputy, someone who lived on the island, would be included, needs to be modified. That was last presented, so that was one that we'll bring to the table tomorrow.
Yes, Kyle? So noted? Yes, Ellen?
So same thing, I mean, if there's more detail that the board and the town are looking for, and we can put it in the contract. Beyond that, there's also the full official freedom of information and access request that could be made for some things. I mean, there's obviously going to be some parts of call logs and details of calls that may not be available publicly, but certainly there is some information more than just the type of incident or response that they did in a quarter or a month. That's usually what we receive, is the type of incident or response and how many.
Yes, Eric?
The board of selectmen wants to set up a meeting with our county commissioners to discuss this contract. But it should be noted that just because we say we want something in the contract does not mean that they will agree to those terms. You know, we will try our best because I think everyone in this room is on the same page, but we only have so much power. I want everybody to understand that. Just because we give you our assurance tonight that we seek these changes in the contract does not guarantee that those changes will be made.
Eric? Eric, could you just speak a little louder, please, to help us? There you go. I think you all hear that? Thank you, Eric. Uh, yes, ma'am?
Their excuse usually is that they're low on manpower. Or someone, okay, because they're Knox County Sheriff's Union, like government jobs. And they can't force someone to come up here if they put on the rotation. They have to give them like two weeks before they go with flat time. They can't say they're going out there tomorrow, they can say, you are going out there in two weeks. So, I mean, we're kind of, they were having the union negotiations this spring, so I don't know how that worked out, but I'm sure they might go out there.
Uh, yes, Kyle, thank you, Drake. And remind everyone that personnel matters, do not come in front of the town meeting. No, not a bad, just a reminder. Is there any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question Article seven. All those in favor of Article seven, please raise your right hand. Okay, I see one, two. Yeah? All opposed? Motion does not, uh, the motion does not. Motion does not, the motion does not carry, Article 7 does not carry. Okay? Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $218,975 for the ambulance account, $50,000 from patient ambulance fees, $1,380 from the ambulance vehicle and equipment reserve, and $167,595 from taxation. Right, a sec, someone want to make that motion? So move and second it? Move and second it? Discussion, questions? Ellen? Yes, Eric?
They usually depend on the year. Did you say last night between 50 and like 90,000?
Yeah, as he said, it's different every year, but I've seen it as low as 35 and as high as 108, I believe, in any one year.
Other questions? Yes, Eric? What do you mean, years, Eric? No, I'm trying to clarify the question in case the selectmen might have an answer to that. Eric?
I know, I've, over the past several years, this is now my, I'm entering my eighth year on this board, and it has not happened now for several years. But the last time it happened, from time to time in the past, the board has been presented with numerous bad debts that for the sake of bookkeeping and not sending loans patients or clients, whatever you want to call them, to a collectance department, they have written off the debt. I would estimate, and now it's been several years, the number is likely over $200,000. And a lot of those were debts that, by the time we wrote them off, were several years old.
That answered, Eric? Thank you. Other questions? Ellen? Anyone know the process, Eric?
The town hires a third-party bill-in agency on, PG Higgins is the name of the company. I'm not sure if that is, or which, I don't know. It's a midcoast company, I'm not sure I can even remember which.
They're out of Winterport.
They're out of Winterport, yeah. Yes? I can, I can answer part of that as a member of the EMS here. Higgins is used by many, many EMS services in the state of Maine. They are top-notch in terms of staying on top of private insurance and Medicare regulations. They're used by a lot, they speak annually at the EMS conference to ambulance directors to assist them in increasing the amount that they might be able to be reimbursed for. Yes, Eric?
I would like to kneel before you, Andy.
Excellent.
That's a, that's a great bio and recap of the company, Jeff, thank you. So the number Eric gave, you know, that spans quite a few years, and I'll just note, there was a significant write-off about the time I had, early when I started, just before I started. It had a lot to do with when Camden, Camden service went out and Northeast came in. There was just a time lapse in billable and the ability to bill. There have been other times, we do, we have a contract with them, it hasn't been renewed for quite some time, but they get 7% of the billables. We're supposed to be getting monthly reports from them, we do the reconciliation in our offices. We do communicate with them, and the reports could be more timely. As long as those billables are going out, presumably there is no lag in the ability to collect. We do write off a policy, a write-off policy due to hardship, as well as a collection policy that states if it goes beyond a certain number of months, it would go to the collection agency. Again, if you wait too long, the insurance companies will not pay that. And it is entirely on the private citizen.
Ellen? I'm sorry, that was my mistake, of course, ma'am. Yes? Any additional questions? See none, I'll call for a vote on Article 8. All in favor, please raise your hand, right hand? All opposed? Okay, Article 8 carries. Article 9, see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $32,900 for the public safety building, $11,450 from fund balance, and $21,450 from taxation. Someone, so moved and seconded? Seconded, thank you. Discussion on Article 9. Yes? Additional questions? See none, I'll call for a vote on Article 9. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Article 9 carries. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $141,061 for the fire department account, $2100 from fund balance, $3,200 from fire vehicle and equipment reserve, and $135,761 in taxation. Is there a motion? So move? And a second? Second, thank you. Discussion, questions? Yes, ma'am? Matt, want to address that? Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, I'll call for a vote on Article 10. All in favor, please raise your right hand? All opposed? Seeing none, the article carries. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $17,620 for the Harbor Master account, $17,620 from watercraft, IV excise taxes. Do I have a motion? So move and second it? Move and second it, thank you. Article 11, questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll, oh, Ellen, I apologize, go right ahead. Phil?
I didn't hear that. Could you speak up a little? Oh, sorry, Phil.
Eric?
No, this article here is strictly for paying the.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Andy, sorry.
Just a clarification, it's, in addition to paying the Harbor Master, it also does have budget lines for routine maintenance of existing infrastructure. So it's not just the salary of the Harbor Master, it supports his duties in maintaining the infrastructure we have.
Additional questions? Yes, Dave? Yes, I will. Thank you, Dave. Are there additional questions or comments? See none, I'll call the question. Article 11, all in favor, please raise your right hand? All opposed? The article carries. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $121,635 for the insurance account, $19,350 from fund balance, and $102,285 from taxation. Do I have a motion? Move and a second? Second, move and seconded. Questions or comments on Article 12? Yes, Ms. Cross, sir? So the question for, the comment from Mr. Cross and the question relates to the amount that's being requested as per this article, considers based on his commercial real estate experience that a 26% increase may not be sufficient, and has specific questions around the allocation for the airstrip, and asks if Penobscot Island Air is also contributing to this account. Is that something, Andy, that you're familiar with?
It is, so the, a few years ago, the, our insurance company, which is through the Maine Municipal Association, the RISCO, they alerted us that, you know, currently we are not, we don't have the insurance to operate that property as a runway. So of course, the PIA, as a matter of the contract we have, they have their own insurances to operate on the runway, but the property, the town wasn't covered. So that was our coverage, to have the minimal airport that it is, with just the runway and almost no improvements. That was, I think it was 1,500 for the first two or three years, and it went to $2,000 last year, just shy of it, when it was a new company. To get with Berkeley Aviation.
Additional questions? Okay, there being, is there additional question or discussion? I don't see any, so I'll call for a vote on Article 12. All in favor, please raise your right hand? Okay, all opposed? The article carries. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $65,650 for the payment of the employer's share of Social Security and Medicare taxes from taxation. So move and second? I'm second, second, thank you. Discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 13. All in favor, please raise your right hand? Okay, all opposed? Article carries. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $33,175 for the code enforcement officer and local planning inspector, $16,500 from building permit and plumbing fees, and $16,675 from taxation. So move, I'm second, and seconded, thank you. Discussions on Article 14? See none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand? Okay, all opposed? Thank you. Article carries. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2,300 for the licensed septic site and fund back. So move, so move and seconded? Second, thank you. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 15. All in favor, please raise your right hand? All opposed? The article carries, motion carries. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $5,325 for the animal control account, $2,300 from dog fees, and $3,025 from taxation. So move, seconded, thank you. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand? Thank you, all opposed? The motion carries. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $428,460 for the transfer station recycling center account, $200,000 from transfer station fees, $22,195 from fund balance, and $2,6265 from taxation. Move and, do I have a second? I do, thank you. Questions, comments? Yes, Banner or Ellen, whoever was first? Is there a plan to generate any more from fees?
Yes. The, in the last two years, we've budgeted about 150,000 from fees, and this year, we're asking, our goal is to reach 200,000 from fees.
Ellen? Okay? Andy?
Just clarify or point out that there is, there is still a cost to the town, it's been borne within this budget to haul off recyclables and to process recyclables. This is not something we charge for. There is still a cost for us to have and get rid of, or second.
Additional comments or questions? Yes, Eric? So Eric is noting until we break down and go to a per-bag cost system, we will always lose on trash, is that right, Eric? Every time I bring a car to the town office, they say it's zero, my cars. Okay, so Eric, Eric is noting that right now, the town has no manner to weigh demolition, and therefore, the fees are largely those that are, quickly have to be determined by the staff at the transfer center, right, Eric? Yep, and? Okay, and the lack of incentive by virtue of being able to just throw recycles, recyclables, and not have to bag them. Is that right, Eric? Thank you? Okay, yes, sir, in fact. Okay, so just noting that a bag system in a town where you lived prior worked well to encourage recycling. Is that fair? Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Yes, Ellen? Andy, do you happen to know the fee structure at the transfer station for metal?
You know, Ellen's question. I believe we've set prices for metal generally by the truckload. And for traps specifically, it's, I believe, 50 cents. I believe if there's no bricks in it, in a dollar, if there are, two bucks now.
Two bucks, thank you, Kyle. Yes, yeah. Yes, Eric. I was, I'm sorry. So the question is, there seems to be a line item for lodging and meals in this transfer station account. And the question is, could we explain why that is there? Eric?
In case any of the employees want to go through any trade pressure.
So the answer, did you hear the answer, Claire? Thank you. Yeah? Yes, Eric? Is there, one of the selectmen or, Bill, do you want to answer that? Does he handle?
Yeah, I, I would just say generally, we're moving, really moving in the right direction in terms of making the kinds of accommodations that Eric is talking about. And in terms of making accommodations, we certainly have come a long way in the last two years thanks to the Wastewatches Committee in terms of what gets thrown in the trash and what no longer gets thrown in the trash, but rather recycling. I think it's been kind of miraculous, the achievements that we've made. And I'm optimistic that as this year goes by, we'll impose more effective cost accounting measures on the kinds of gaps that Eric was describing.
So the gaps that Eric was describing were those of businesses in town that are permitted to dispose during non-dump hours. Is that correct, Eric? And can someone answer that portion of the question?
Well, those weren't the only gaps. We're talking about, for example, weighing, proposed demo, that sort of thing. There were several. When the camera system up there. Really cheap. That's the accountability, I guess, of the standing, just in the right protection, they show that they don't.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Eric. Yes, Eric, that.
I'm more than willing to say that sometimes in the summer, if I have a smelling bag of trash and the dump is not open that day, it's my day off of home, I will go up that day, the hundred gate, and throw away the garbage. And the next day that I do go up, I tell them, I have one bag today, and last week I also had one bag. I'm not sure, you know, I admit that I do.
Corruption comes from the top, Mr. Dabby. Yes, Eric, I, I mean, Kyle, I recognize you, go ahead. So so Eric's asking specifically for businesses in town that are permitted to use the dump in non-operational hours, can we have accountability for their refuse? Is that right, Eric? Uh, let me just try to get an answer to this one, we don't. Yeah, Eric?
I'm not sure if we've ever run into a problem with the town being cheated in that manner, at least not that I'm aware of. And just to the point of you and I dumping off our stinky garbage, if it's a restaurant and trying to get rid of a lot of garbage, and it happens to be one of the three days the dump is not open, it's just easier for them to go in that day to get rid of the garbage based on their own manpower. And then we're off with the attendant and the way to come.
Eric, you had a question? Is there a process that a business has to go through in order to be approved to use the dump in non-operational hours? Sounds like an Andy question.
That's something that Kenny manages based on his years of experience up there and accountability that he holds against them or towards them. And I know we, when we change the locks on there, he handed out new keys to those that, you know, who knows need to go or are regulars that feel they need to go. And if folks are inquiring and asking that we consider a different use policy, I suppose that would be a good thing to bring to the board's attention either tonight or at a future selectman's meeting if we don't agree with how that's being.
Yes, Ellen? Okay, that's an operational issue that I invite you to bring to the selectman's meeting, because it's not really germane to this particular article. Are there any questions related to the amount or to the operation in this article? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 17, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? The article carries. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,000 for the general assistance account on fund balance. Move and seconded, thank you. Questions on Article 18? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 18. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $481,510 for the public works department, $275,000 for motor vehicle excise taxes, $21,000 from state aid road assistance, $5,000 through fund balance, and $180,510 from taxation. Is there a motion to move? So move and a second? Seconded is, thank you. Moved and seconded. Questions, comments on Article 19? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 19, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Article carries, thank you. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for the fire department vehicle and equipment reserve from taxation. Move, seconded, thank you. Questions? Yes, Eric? Question is, do we have any plans to replace any of the fire trucks? Chief, standard? Go on. I, I'm going to repeat it. So Mark believes that in two years, a 1985 fire truck will be up for replacement. Thank you, Jake.
1985.
I see no, any other further questions? I don't see anybody with a hand up. Uh, if not, I will call for a vote on Article 20. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Article carries, thank you. Just Article 21, to see if the town will vote and raise to appropriate $190,000 from road repair from taxation. So move, second, thank you. All, all questions or concerns? Ellen? So the question is, is this for repair or to make roads winter worthy? Is that right? Do we have an answer to that specific question? Ellen? What is the entire question? Andy, can you answer that question as to whether the individuals are purchasing property on the island on roads that are not maintained in the wintertime?
I can't speak to that exact question. It was so, if people are buying property on roads that aren't maintained in the winter, but generally roads, public roads require maintenance and we're obligated by law to do so. If they aren't fit and they are open in the wintertime, we need to make whatever repairs are necessary to be able to get our own equipment out of there, let alone people that live on it.
That answer your question, Ellen?
To the, to the point about, we do not charge a, a fee or a, send a bill to a property owner anywhere along a private road and, you know, that, you know, a public road is something that's, we're born and, you know, have to maintain those. So there's no additional bill sent to a private, a property owner along any of the those roads to maintain them.
So what's the difference between public roads and private roads? That was with Andy's point. Yes, Eric? So Eric's noting that residents on Zeke's Point Road voluntarily contributed some additional funds to the town in order to add to the improvements that were planned. Is that fair? Thank you. Ellen? Yep? So Andy, you want to speak to, to clarify Ellen's point? You brought up something a few town meetings ago about the town's obligation to maintain public roads in the winter. Remember that?
No, I don't recall that discussion, but yes, that is true.
Because at one time, we used to vote, Ellen, as you know, we used to vote on which roads to close. And there is no, there's no list of roads here, of public roads that get closed in the winter on this. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's quite, for quite a few years now, the select board has given the authority on behalf of the voters in a, in a later article tonight to close roads to their maintenance, and they take that up at a selectman's meeting in the fall.
Yes, Eric?
Not only is it voted at a selectman's meeting, I believe by law, they're also required highly performing before the select.
No?
They still get performing. If the proposed roads play on four, then it's like, then it has to be by a certain date.
Like, we usually, definitely we post it ahead of time, and it's, again, by the article later on in tonight's meeting, it's the select board that you're given the authority to close those roads for maintenance. Last year, I don't think we did any of, closed any of them.
Ellen, yes? If everyone could hear that, so Ellen is concerned about the high cost of roads that in the past had been maintained solely recently for seasonal resident. But now with your own residences there, cost is borne by the town's taxation or some other methodology. And that the cost is significant for those improvements for those roads. Is that fair, Ellen? Thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $190,000 for road repair from taxation. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for the public works vehicle slash equipment reserve from taxation. So moved and is there a second? Second, thank you. Uh, discussion, comment? Eric? Do we have any plans to replace and/or add any vehicles in the near future? I hear the word backhoe, is that right? Any additional questions? Seeing none, I'll call for vote on Article 22. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All opposed? Article carries. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for the ambulance vehicle and equipment reserve from taxation. So move. So moved, is there a second? Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, yes, sorry, go right ahead. Andy, could you speak to that?
Sure. So it's just a, a line that we haven't funded in the last few years, but we just purchased a, a new used ambulance this past year, and so we were able to do that with the reserve fund, and so it's in some part being able to put a little bit more back into that. And we do have other, a list of other needs and equipment that over time needs to be replaced, so it gives us the opportunity. And it last year was a perfect example, there was a used one, we were looking at buying, and a couple pieces of equipment that used ambulance came with it at the same cost of buying those two pieces of equipment brand new. And we do have other, a list of other needs and equipment that over time needs to be replaced, so it gives us the opportunity, and it last year was a perfect example, there was a used one, we were looking at buying, and a couple pieces of equipment that used ambulance came with it at the same cost of buying those two pieces of equipment brand-new. And so it came from a service that we trusted and felt good about, went to the ambulance, we got an eight or nine-year upgrade on the, on the year of the ambulance, by buying that one. One that we retired, was one that was on our two- or three-year outlook to replace anyway, so these reserve monies kind of give us that opportunity. So it's just us trying to put a little bit more back into that, acknowledging that we did just buy that.
So the question was, what the purpose of, to go from zero to twenty-five thousand? Are there other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article twenty-three. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Article carries. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the equipment reserve, two-thousand-five-hundred from fund balance. So moved, is there a second? Second, thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article twenty-four. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All opposed? Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars for the roads capital reserve fund. Thirty-five thousand or any amount is received from the state of Maine local road assistance program, LRAM. So moved, seconded, thank you. Comments or questions on this article? Yes? How does this differ from the road repair line item?
So this is a contribution that comes directly from the state, acknowledging that we have just shy of six miles, and it's five-point-three or six miles of state aid road out here. They, they contribute to every state, mile of state aid road in the state, and that's one of the, they use, gives us about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and that has to go towards capital improvements of the state aid roads.
Thank you, Andy. Other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article twenty-five. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, Article twenty-five carries. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars for the historic sites reserve and fund balance. Do I have a motion and a second? Second, thank you. Questions on this account? Ellen? Okay, Ellen is asking what the funds in the past have been used for, specifically a question as to the covering of the gallamander. Andy?
Balance is just, just over thirty-one thousand.
And the second part of that question, which was, did the appropriate covering of the gallamander get accomplished? Bill, sorry.
You're right, it was supposed to have been covered, and you're right, it wasn't.
But it repaired and painted, but not covered. Ellen? Bill?
Well, there are, there are still improvements remaining to the name of the gallamander, supposed to be raised and gravel bed put under it. And accommodations made to ensure that there'll be no rock coming from the ground up.
And the second part, are there other projects in mind for the balance plus what would go in from this reserve appropriation? Nope? None contemplated at this moment. Yes, Eric? If we spent the money to repair the ga, and paint the gallamander and do not cover it, are we gonna run into similar problems in the future of deterioration? Bill?
I'm certainly determined that we'll cover each weather as recommended by the way they will perform.
Yes, Ellen? So Ellen's question is, who is responsible? Would this be better done under the purview of the historical society? Bill?
Well, the answer to the first part of that question is, we are responsible. I don't know whether it would be better animal-minded historical society. But the restoration work that we've done so far has been done in conjunction to the historical society.
No, sorry.
Not the cost money.
Ellen? So an effort was made, Jake, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep, done, yep. But nobody showed.
I guess we could have called some more people.
Additional questions or comments? If there are none, I'll call for a vote on Article twenty-six. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Please keep them up for a moment, raise your right hand again, please. Okay, all opposed? Okay, the article carries. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote and to raise an appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the landfill equipment reserve from taxation. Do I have a motion? So moved and a second? Second, thank you. Article twenty-seven, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article twenty-seven. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, motion carries. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the sidewalk reserve fund from taxation. Moved and seconded, thank you. Comments, questions? Eric, I see your hand up, yep. Are we ever gonna start fixing the sidewalks we have that are ever, that are falling apart right now?
So there's obviously more than just Main Street, but Main Street's taken a significant focus in the last few years, and there's, you know, a downtown master plan that has been created over the last couple of years. And it outlines a timeline to seek funding, certainly alternative sources if we can, and we weren't successful in one grant, there's another one that we have out, and a third one being worked on. So it's estimated to be about four million dollars to open the ferry boat through Main Street with sidewalk drainage, road improvements, it's a long overdue. Beyond that, there needs to be a work plan to look at other sidewalks beyond that.
Eric? So our, the question is, are you ignoring the existing sidewalks to the school down on, what, Main Street? Going up over the hill from Main Street, yeah? Okay. Ball ground? Do we have any commentary from the select board or Andy? Done?
We're not ignoring them, but there's many choices that we have to make, it comes down to funds, and repairing sidewalks is not a cheap endeavor, so we need to find the funds. As Andy mentioned, we're applying for grants, hopefully those will do well, and we free up money in the downtown revitalization plan through grant funding, we can use some of that money to repair some of the other stuff. I think we all agree that we, that it'll long overdue and we need to focus on those, but unfortunately, it takes time.
Thank you. Yes? How much is in the sidewalk reserve fund right now?
Approximately four-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Okay? Ellen? So this is tangential to the actual article, but I will allow it to go forward. Referencing specifically the grocery store area, can any of this be used for that improvement? Is that your question, Ellen? They will patch jobs, they'll usually come out of the reserve fund, this is to accumulate funds towards lot, towards other projects. Is that fair, Andy?
I certainly wouldn't say yes or no without knowing more about who does the work and whether a patch would suffice to the area you're talking about. You know, there's a steep slope there, and I don't know if you could simply just put a patch, usually put patches over places that have holes or defects in them, that's a significant slope, and I'm not sure if you, you know, what type of patch you may be able to put there, but it's something we can look into.
Okay, thank you. Eric? All right, I'll repeat briefly the comment, which is that by changing the traffic flow of pedestrian traffic, you could reduce that slope because of the nature of that sidewalk. Eric's also noting that some of the sidewalk improvements really have to be held up until the significant work done on the sidewalks in general. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah.
Is... Okay. Okay. Okay, the specifics of how to improve are really something for the selectmen and the road commission to take up, road commission to take up. It's not really appropriate for this discussion, which is a reserve fund discussion. So I'm gonna ask, are there specific questions to this appropriation for the sidewalk reserve fund? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, one. This Article twenty-eight carries. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the harbor reserve, fifty thousand from taxation. Do I have a motion? Moved and a second? Second, thank you. Questions or comments on the appropriation for the harbor reserve? Are you resting or, that's okay, yes ma'am, thank you.
Currently, there's just over one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand in the reserve. It's aimed to make improvements to the existing infrastructure down there, estimates, we're estimating, there's no bids or, you know, engineer estimates, but estimating based on past work out here. The fish plant wharf needing about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of work for piling replacement, the old ferry cribbing down by the ferry terminal. We did that, there was an estimate that came in from a different study this year, looking at sea level rise, things that estimated four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to repair or replace the old crib work down there. I mean, as pointed out earlier, there's certainly a lap of tie-up space and flows, and so it's something that could be utilized there as well.
Does that answer your question? Great, thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article twenty-nine. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate three thousand dollars for the fireworks reserve, three thousand to come from fund balance. Do I have a motion? So moved and a second? Moved and seconded, thank you. Discussion, yes sir? Okay? So the comment was, this banner, is that you, Mark behind this, sorry, does not believe that the town should be paid for fireworks. Any additional discussion? Bill?
The fireworks committee made a very persuasive argument to the board of selectmen for an annual appropriation for this patriotic celebration. And as I say, they made a persuasive argument. I would have voted against that appropriation if they not made persuasive argument, but they did.
Ellen? Is this a relatively new item is the question, Bill?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It is new, Ellen. So this is a portion of the total. Yes, ma'am?
Three thousand dollars.
Then, we signed the, we signed the contract in February for show June, whatever it would be, twenty days ago, but obviously with the current environment, that money's carrying over for another year, so in theory, we'll have a bigger show, I guess, next year.
Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Article thirty, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, can I see the, who's in, we need your help on this. Can I see the, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Thank you? I see it, Jerry. Yes, the article carries. Thank you. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate fifty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the cemetery care account. Sixteen thousand from fund balance, thirty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty from taxation. So moved and seconded? Moved and seconded, thank you. Questions or comments on the cemetery care account? Yes, Ellen? Kind of work is actually done. Andy, do you have a summary for that?
Sure, so the, the biggest amount in there is approximately thirty-two thousand dollars that goes towards mowing and routine maintenance, mostly mowing. And there's a ten-thousand-dollar line for stone restoration and cleaning work. New this year is in effort to try and digitize all the old records in MAPS, something that we're gonna work, plan to work in conjunction with the historical society on, as they've already started significant database building. And so utilizing some GIS software that we're gonna buy licensing for, turn to digitize some of that. But that's forty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty of it.
Ellen, follow up? Yep?
Just say we'll start with the public cemeteries for now, and we'll probably have our hands full trying to get the majority of those done this year.
So the question was, will that cover both public and private cemeteries on the island? And Andy's response was, we'll start with the public ones, because that's a major project right now. Ellen, follow up? Will it include the, Andy, private ones in the future?
Generally, town funds raised through taxation cannot be used for private purposes or private properties, so there may be some cemetery uh, there may be some cemetery plots within private cemeteries that may get mapped. It might be something in the future after we get through year one, uh, to work out with the historical society, maybe they keep the database. Um, but I guess you're asking a question that we don't have an answer for today.
Okay, Ellen? Good. A-again, while that is a perfectly germane point for a selectman's meeting, pay attention to that. And I appreciate your efforts to get private mentioned here. Um, however, it's not specific to this article. Eric, have you had it? Yep. Okay, so Eric is complimenting the historical society and particularly Elizabeth Bunker for all the hard work and successful work they've done in plotting and recording, uh, private cemetery sites and that. Public, my apologies. My apologies. Yes. Andy, can you answer that question as to, uh, which portion of that line item is either town employee or which portion is contracted?
So we-
Service fees are for the mowing, voluntary, the fallings, the cemetery coordinators. Did you hear that?
No, can you repeat that, Jake? It wasn't clear.
Said that the service fees are for the mowing and, uh, fallings is the siphon. Cemetery coordinator position that the town has.
Does that answer the question? Yes, thank you. Great. Additional questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 31. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed. The article carries. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate $106,594 for the public library account. 6,000 from fund balance and $100,594 from taxation. Do I have a motion? Don't move. So move and a second? Second, move and seconded. Questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, so therefore I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 32, please raise your right hand. Okay, and all opposed? One, okay, the article carries. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate $145,135 for various town properties. $10,000 from payments in lieu of taxes. $6,750 from the old fire hall rental income. $10,500 from fund balance and $117,885 from taxation. Do I have a motion? So move by the second. Second, thank you. Move and seconded. Questions or comments on Article 33? Yes, Ellen? So two questions. One, what are some of the town properties that are covered by this article? And what are some of the things that the monies might get used for relative to those properties?
89,000 of it is for the fire hydrants, 22,000 for tree lines. And then there's a little bit of money for the town walk, the old fire hall, to pay for the peripheries, the Indian Creek Lees. Just, I mean, the majority of it's gone. Fire hydrants and- And lights.
So streetlights, fire hydrants take up the majority of it, is that correct, Jake?
That's over-
Thank you.
That's over 100.
Yeah, over 100,000 of it, yeah. Okay. Additional questions or comments? Oh, yes, Mr. Daniel. Andy, can you explain that? The question is the 10,000 in lieu, in payment of, in lieu of taxes, whose, whose payment?
Uh, no guarantee upfront, but in the last few years have been pretty consistent that contributions come from Vinyl Haven Land Trust, Main Coast Heritage Trust, and a small amount from the federal government.
Sir? The airfield has $1,500 allocated. Do we know what that's for?
Yeah, about $660 pays the light bill, $540 pays for the AWAS phone. Uh, that's the weather station that's up there. Um, and then $300 for being able to maintain that area around it.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Questions or comments? Additional ones on Article 34? Yes, Ellen? $8,000 for Indian Creek, what is that? Is that the bridge, Andy? Access to it?
So $500 goes towards the lease agreement cost. Uh, this year we're asking for $7,500 to make necessary repairs to the, the old steelwork that's there on the bridge, so it's still safe.
Any other questions related to this article? Seeing none, I'll call for vote on Article 34. Three. Oh, three, thank you. All in favor of Article 33, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? The article carries. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to appropriate any unspent payment in lieu of taxes at the end of the fiscal year to the park reserve. Move and seconded. It's noted here in the article as an explanation. Each year, the town receives payment in lieu of taxes from various land trust groups with the intent that the funds offset town park expenses. As the actual amount to be received is unknown until receipt, any amount in excess of the projected revenue and any amount unspent from the park's expense line would revert to the park's reserve. explanatory note with that article. Any questions or comments on Article 34? Yes, ma'am. Do we know how much is in that reserve account, please?
About $2,400.
About 2,400, okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments on Article 34? Seeing none, I'll, uh, call for a vote. All in favor of Article 34, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Thank you. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,000 for donations and or social services for the following organizations in the amount indicated from fund balance. Henquist Cap, $500. Food Pantry slash surplus food, $500. Lifeline of Maine, $1,000. New Hope for Women, $500. And, uh, is this Waldo Cap? W?
I believe, yes, I believe so.
Yeah, thank you. Waldo Community Action Program, $500. Do I have a motion? Don't move. So move and a second? Right, second, thank you all. Questions or comments on Article 35? Ms. Cross, Daniel? So, Andy?
Yes.
Yes, so the question was, is this consistent with the amount appropriated from prior years? The answer was yes. Thank you. Seeing, uh, do I see any additional questions, comments? No. Seeing none, I'll call for vote on Article 35. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? If being none, Article 35 carries. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate $59,800 for plan planning slash community development. 24,100 from fund balance and 35,700 from taxation. Do I have a motion? Move and a second? Questions, comments? Ellen, yes? So the question is, looks like the amount has changed. Is it now a full-time position? Is that correct, Ellen? Yes. Can anybody answer that?
So it's actually proposed as two positions. The part-time position would stay part-time and, uh, we'd be hiring an island fellow to support other works or complement the works that the planner is also doing.
Additional questions or comments? Ellen, is that your hand up? Yep. Okay. So Ellen's question, uh, compliments Gabe Lane on her work and wonders whether her position should become full-time and why instead we seem to be bringing on an island fellow. Anybody wish to tackle that? Andy?
The board went, again, went through the budget committee process and the board also reviewed it. The matter of work planning and looking at it, we did consult and talk with the, the employee as well. Um, and after we put a work plan together, felt that this was the best work plan that would accomplish the most amount of work.
Are there additional questions? I've seen none, I'll call for a vote on Article 36. All in favor of the article, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate $299,916 for debt service. $45,000 for fund balance and $254,916 of taxation. This will cover the 2014 paving loan of $73,000 that's due. Final payment is 8/1/2024. 2015 plow truck payment is $37,675. Final payment is January 6, 2021. Public Works Facility, $100,725.50. Estimated final payment is 7/31/2029. Carrying Place Bridge, $44,825. The estimated final payment is 7/31/2029. And 2019 paving, uh, an amount due of $43,690.50. Estimated final payment is 10/31/2026. Do I have a motion? So move and a second? Second, thank you. Discussion, questions? Ellen? So Ellen is asking what the final amount is likely to be for the Public Works Facility, um, with the final payment being in 2029. Andy?
So say it's an estimated, uh, final payment. There's no closing on the, on the bond yet. Uh, we're still going through, obviously, the, you know, finalizing the plans of what exactly will be done. The tax payers through town meeting, was it last year, two years ago? It was last year. Um, authorized up to an additional 600,000, so the total authorized up to not to exceed is 1.6 million. Of course, if it could be done less than that, we certainly will. The bids came back after we put it out for bid. Uh, we have the construction cost that came back to us was 2.23. Um, and added to that, you'd have to add the engineering fees as well. Um, plus the costs already incurred, so, yeah, we rejected all those bids and we're have another offer on the table right now that we're reviewing and we're going, going forward from there.
Additional questions or comments? Yes, Dan? So the question is, with interest rates plummeting, um, has the town considered any, uh, use of a financial consultant to see if we can renegotiate some of our outstanding debt service?
As far as outstanding debt service, we haven't talked about that. Something we could look into presumably is of the, um, the ones that we haven't committed or closed the bond, article of the bond closings yet. Um, we haven't locked in a interest rate on the Public Works Facility, the bridge or the pavement. We're still waiting to close on those and presumably the market would give us the best rate today.
Thank you. Additional questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 37. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Article carries. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to transfer up to 10% of the unspent balances from various accounts as needed to provide for the smooth transition of town business. So move and move and seconded. Questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 38, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All opposed? The motion carries. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to appropriate an amount equal to the tax rate times the value of $13 million to fund the required tax increment financing, or TIF, payment to Fox Island Winds LLC. 90% for the fiscal year 2020-21. Pursuant to the credit enhancement agreement between the Town of Vinyl Haven and Fox Island Winds LLC. And to place the remaining funds, 10%, from the total property tax payment in a reserve fund dedicated to capital improvements in or related to the TIF district. Do I have a, a motion? Move. Do I have a second? Second. So the TIF district, Andy, is the turbine area, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this article? Yes, Eric?
So I personally dropped the ball on this. North Haven, as usual, is making a, like a bandit on this. Right now, the Town of Vinyl Haven gives a major tax break to Fox Island Wind. And the Town of North Haven contributes exactly $0 to that. And obviously has the benefit of the winter, but I always felt no one deserved it. But, that being said, contractually, all the people pay it, so maybe it won't, yeah.
Thank you, Eric, I think. Ellen? How long is the contract, Eric? Do you know?
Great Andy question.
It's an Andy question. Andy?
Uh, could be misspeaking, but I believe it's 30 years.
Questions or comments? Kyle, you're with Eric? And Eric is with Eric, is that right? Those are comments, okay, great. Okay, the good neighbors to the north are chuckling away at that. Maybe we could visit the brewery and get some free. Right? Article 39, Ellen, you have additional questions, go right ahead. Has the Town of North Haven ever been approached?
No, we have not.
No they haven't? Yeah?
As I said, I dropped the ball. I set it as a goal for the Board of Selectmen last July and we just never got to it.
Ellen? So the suggestion is that perhaps the Town of North Haven would make a contribution if approached? Okay? Any additional question or comment? All right, I'll call for a vote on, um, Article 39. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
The town's signed an agreement saying that they, they will. You can be upset with it from ways like Eric said, to maybe try and find other ways to help fund it, but you're obligated to make this contribution.
So I, if I could, I'll, let me call for a vote, please. All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two. Okay, all of three, four. Eric, is that up or down? Down, four, okay, all opposed? This is the three counting as well? I can get five last time. So doesn't care. Did you get five? Oh, I did not, thank you, okay. So it's five to four, something like that? Okay, so the article passes. Five to four. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established by the Town of Vinyl Haven by state law in the event that the municipal budget approval under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax limit. A reminder that LD1 legislation from years ago requires that this article be taken up at the town meeting voters through a written balloting process. So move? Seconded. You have ballots? Already handed out, can I get one? If there's no objection from, uh, those present, oh, the votes in Article 40 are being counted, I'd like to move on to Article 41. No objection. Thank you. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept conditional gifts of money to the town and to appropriate and expend the funds for the purposes for which the gift was made and in accordance with any conditions imposed by the donor and to accept conditional gifts of personal property to the town and to use that property in the manner specified by the donor. So moved, is there a second? Second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, motion carries. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept state and federal grants and grants from nonprofit organizations on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including when necessary, the authority to sign the grant contract and accept the conditions and accompany the grant funds and to appropriate and expend funds for the authorized purposes. Do I have a motion? And second? Second, thank you. Any discussion on Article 42? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 42. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Motion carries. At the results from the vote, paper ballot vote on Article 41, and the article carries. Motion is carried. Forty, did I get that wrong? My apologies, thank you very much, thank you everyone. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to set a date when taxes shall be paid and if so, what rate of interest shall be charged on taxes unpaid after that set date? The maximum allowable rate is 8%. Selectmen recommend due dates of November 2nd, 2020 and May 3rd, 2021 and an interest rate of 8%. So move, is there a second? Moved and seconded. Questions, comments on Article 43? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 43. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, and all opposed? Thank you. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon on such terms and conditions as the Board deems advisable, except for property tax acquired from certain senior low-income taxpayers who qualify for the special sale process required pursuant to 36 MISA 943-C. Move. So move and seconded. Any questions or comments on the Article 44? Ellen? Does anyone know the details of that particular statute?
I'll spare everyone from reading the full statute, um, but in a nutshell, it, it put a, they put a cap on the, on the, so anyone over, I think it's 65, I believe, that lives in a home in which a tax lien was filed, you have the town has to go through a process when it comes to foreclosure and that it's not, uh, as straightforward as, as it may have been through tax required, uh, that it is foreclosed. And so, um, what it requires is for the, the select board or for, for the town to enter into some sort of payment arrangement or agreement with them. If, if that cannot be met, um, then the town needs, actually mortgage not set within 18 months to the filing date. With that, we, eventually, if, if it's not paid based on that agreement, uh, we would have to then act as a broker, if you will, and solicit real estate agents to sell on their behalf. Um, and then the big difference is if, if it goes through that process and sold, uh, the money comes back to the town for the taxes due and the rest of it goes either some part presumably to the real estate agent, uh, as well as the property owner.
Thank you, man. Other questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 44. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Article 44 carries. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and dispose of excess equipment and supplies on such terms and conditions as the Board deems advisable. So move, do I have a second? Moved and seconded. Questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And you, and all opposed? Article 46, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to 36 MISA 506. So move? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, thank you. Questions or comments on Article 46? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, all opposed? Thank you very much. Article passes. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease real property and buildings for periods not to exceed 10 years under such terms and conditions as the Board deems advisable. So moved and seconded. Questions or comments on Article 47? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 47, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Article carries. Article 48, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make final determinations regarding the closing or opening of roads to winter maintenance pursuant to 23 MISA 295. So move, is there a second? Moved and seconded, thank you. Questions or comments on Article 48? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Article 48? And all opposed? Article carries. Those are the articles in front of this town meeting. I thank everyone for your participation, both in person and or online. Uh, I'll move to accept the motion to adjourn the town meeting.
I'm moving to adjourn.
And is there a second to that? There's a second, many. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
We have a, that's a special town meeting to follow this one regarding three other articles.
Can you, there needs to be another town meeting right now? Larry? All right. It's not here. Article two of the special town meeting, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,000 for the old fire hall reserve and fund the balance. So move and seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions or comments on this article in the special town meeting? The vote to appropriate 3,000 from an existing, from the fund balance to the old fire hall.
I'll just, for those inquiring, the, we budgeted for improvements in, in fiscal year 20 that weren't completed. And so it's just acknowledging that we did set up reserve funds, uh, I think it was last year or the year before for some of the buildings. And so it's appropriating those monies that were unspent intended for improvements to be put into the reserve, uh, to be used for those purposes still, um, as we can get contractors to do them.
Oh, sorry, Eric, yes, sir. Thank you, man. What exactly wasn't done the previous year that might be done this year, do we know?
Painting and clavberd work.
Painting and clavberd work. Additional questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article two. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, article carries. Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $6,000 for the Washington School Reserve and Fund Balance. Do I have a motion? Move, is there a second? Seconded, thank you. Questions or comments on Article three? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article three. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Okay, article carries. Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $10,000 for the Public Safety Building Reserve from fund balance. So move? Seconded. Questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on Article four. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? Article carries. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $4,000 for the PAC's reserve from fund balance. So move? And seconded, thank you. Questions or comments on Article five? Seeing none, I'll call for vote on Article five. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And all opposed? I believe, is there another special town meeting? Thank you again, everyone, for your participation in town governance, much appreciated. Thank you so much, we thank you all, James. I'll take a motion to adjourn the special town. And second, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Excellent, thank you all.